In front of you, there's a couple of documents. The first one is the policy that Chino Valley Unified has passed in their, at their board meeting. If, just to recall for the board, last month trustee Cisneros asked that we have a discussion at this meeting in regards to next steps, or possible next steps in regards to a policy from Chino Valley. Just a reminder, the Chino Valley policy that's in front of you that was approved by their board is not the same policy that was the initial one several months ago in regards that were specific to parent notifications in regards to gender or changes of pronouns and any of that. So this is a different type of policy. So she sent it to me and then she met with me and our SLS team to go through it. She wanted to make sure that the policy that was in front of us did not replicate or duplicate any other policies that we already may have in our, in our system. So I want to kind of go through it with you because there are a lot of this that's already in policy within our, within our organization. So I want to kind of go through it step by step. And then I'm going to turn it over to trustee Cisneros to take it from there. So the policy that's in front of you is, as I mentioned, discussed or was approved by the Chino Valley School Board, and it's an abbreviated version of what was the original policy. And it outlined different areas that they wanted to ensure that parents were, would be notified in the event of. So in Area 1, that says the district notification policy requires the following, and it discusses that parents and principal designee certificated staff, school counselors shall notify parents, guardians in writing, within three days from the date any district employee or minister or certificated staff becomes aware that a student is requesting to change any information contained in the student's official or unofficial record. So again, this is a reminder that the Chino Valley Unified School District is a school district. The Board of Trustees here is a county office, or School Board of Trustees, and the County Office of Education operates programs, two main programs that this board has jurisdiction over, which is the court and community. Unlike school districts where this could be more applicable, for court and community schools, if a child comes to us where we have the educational services for that child in a court school, we are not allowed to change a child's record regardless if the child wants it or the parent wants it. It has to be done by the court. That's a court appointed, those students are appointed to us by the court. So the courts limit us from doing anything with their, with their records. Community schools is a little different because those are children who are coming to us because they've either been expelled or needed a different educational placement. Again, those are not our children, meaning they're not, they don't reside within a typical school district boundary. So those students are coming to us from a school district. Those school districts' records cannot be changed by us either. So if they send, whatever they send us is the records in which we have to oblige with and follow. If a child comes to us and says, "I want to change it," we cannot change it because those records are the official records of the local school district, not the Kern County Superintendent's Schools. So both court and community students are already protected in regards to their records, meaning that they can't change nor can the school change their records. So if they come to us and they have a change in name, pronoun, whatever the case may be, we have, we have to follow that. We, we are obligated to rework with either courts or the school district in which those students are coming to us. So that's point one, or bullet one that they had on their policy. Notification bullet number two talks about school-sponsored extracurricular activities. And again, this is another area that really doesn't, is not applicable to Kern County Superintendent's School programs because of the fact that we don't have any extracurricular activities. There's only one activity that is offered, and that's weights, and that's through the court community school, and we are, they are required to have permission by either the court-awarded entity award or the parent in order to participate in that program. So we're already covered in regards to area number two. Area number three and four are both very similar, but area three talks about any physical injury. We are required, so our school districts are required to notify parents of any injuries that require, well, any injuries in permanent, any injuries, but if they are requiring additional, need to go to medical, urgent care, doctors, and then we are, it's required by insurance requirements. So all school districts are required to provide information to the parents. So there, that's already another coverage. And we also have Board Policy 6005, which is in your packet, that talks about the encouragement of the schools and our programs, and schools in our program, I mean like special education classrooms, alt ed classrooms, are encouraged to include parents as much as possible in the everyday education of their children. Number four talks about suicidal intent, and we have a board policy that is 5141, that's in your, your packet as well, and that outlines exactly what we are required to do, and it requires us to communicate and engage with the parents or the guardian of that child. Again, for us, it would be if, if it's a community school child, we have to not only notify the parents, we also have to notify the school, that the district that has sent the child to our program. And in court community, and the court is the same, we notify the, the courts without the probation department. So number four is covered by an existing policy, AR 5141. Notification number five discusses any complaints, verbal or physical altercations involving a child, including bullying. This is covered by the Uniform Complaint Procedure and also policy, superintendent policy 6174. Also has a very clear delineation of what we are to do in regards to bullying. Last month, we had a presentation in regards to the resources that we provide in that area as well. So parent has a right to fill out Uniform Complaint Policy, and then that engages us with the parents as well. Item number six talks about providing information to district employees where there's any changes within Areas 1 through 5 is warranted, and that's covered on the ability for the school and for our particular situation at county office. The director of the alt ed program of community or court or community will work with those in, employees of the district within the program and work with the district if it's a child in our community schools. So we will work with them on any issues of bullying, suicidal attempts, and so forth that was mentioned in Items 1 through 5. If we do have a child who wants to change their record, or they ask us to change their record, we are obligated, as I mentioned, and it's the same here on number six, we would have to go back to the court or to the school district to let them know that there's been a request, and then that's their jurisdiction in that component. Then item number seven talks about family code, health and safety code, unless specifically prohibited by law. There is a law, longstanding law in California that any child 12 years or older can seek out medical attention or mental help or mental assistance, behavioral health type of programs without the approval of the parent. A lot of times, parents get involved later under the law, but the immediate is 12 and over are protected, and that is mentioned in here in regards to appropriate unless specifically prohibited by law, and that's the reference point that they're talking about is that 12-year-old component. So there is that existing law, but in regards to health, safety, anything that talks about anything from Items 1, 2, or 2 through 6, we are required to mention and talk to our parents or court and awards. So it is very different. The Chino policy in front of you is meant for the school district, which is different in the capacity, what they can do versus the program that we oversee, which is court and community with, with those students. So I just wanted to kind of, trustee Cisneros, ask if I could kind of go through and walk you through this, and then I'm going to turn it over to her for any next steps that she would like to discuss.
Thank you, Dr. Mendebro. I did think of a question while you were presenting that. You did mention in the case of AR 5141, which is the one, the suicide prevention program, in that case, you would notify parents first and then the school that they came from? Did I hear that correctly?
Correct, especially for community school because the community school typically has the parent involvement. Court does have, but there are some situations where some of our students that come to us, the court has priority over that child before the parents can be notified. So it just depends on the situation of the child who comes to us.
Either way, though, the parents are notified in that case?
Yes, but the steps on who gets notified when?
Okay.
It may be different because a court child, they may be the ward of the court. We have to notify probation first. We can't, they limit us or prohibit us to speak to parents because of whatever has happened. Then they will then contact parents if, if that's their next step. Community, we contact parents first, then we talk to the district to let them know.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. And then are there any students that, who have parents who voluntarily enroll them in the community school, or are they all expelled or have a behavior issue?
No, for the community school, parents do have a right to request. The district has to approve. So that, in that case, they're not being sent to us through an expulsion-type process. It's more of an agreement between us and the district that yes, their child can come to us, but they're still under the district's jurisdiction. They come to us for the educational services, so then we would again, talk to parents first and then the district second.
That makes sense. Do, do you know if we have any students in that category?
We have a few. There's a few that, typically each year, we'll get a handful of students who just, they might have a tough time with attendance issues, may be a, a good example, where they just can't go to school for whatever reason that's going on at the home, and then they ask, can we go to a community school setting because they're not mandated every single day to be there from like 8 o'clock to 3 o'clock? So sometimes that's a little easier for them. Sometimes they need it just because there's stuff going on at home that they just don't want to deal with. They want to keep it more confined. So there's different situations that the students come to us for community school, but it's usually those type of situations.
Okay, thank you for that. And I know I've, I've heard of some students coming because they are a little more independent on the pace. They can go on their education because it's alternative, right? They're not in a traditional setting like they would be at their, their school of residence. Is that correct? If, I'm just throwing that out there.
Typically, we don't see students who are coming to us to like do acceleration. We're working with students based on alignment to the curriculum in which they're coming from. They have, we have our own curriculum per se, just like any school district type of a situation, but we keep it aligned. If they're a fifth grader who comes to us as a fifth grader, they'll be receiving fifth grade. If there's any intervention or enrichment-type programs we will do with a student, it'd be very typical that you would find in a local school district as well to, to provide some acceleration.
The reason why I'm asking all these questions is because I really want to wrap my head around who we oversee. There's, there's some nuances there. It's not a traditional school district, I understand that. We still have parents involved, and I understand with the court schools, it's a little different. That makes sense to me. They're under the court ruling and authority and all that, so. And just to be clear, I don't even have my own children in school anymore. They're grown. It's just in my, my heart to really protect parents' rights, and these are our future welders, clerks, and government leaders and lawmakers. I mean, they're important to all of us. I know that. So what I'm bringing to this board is, is actually really simple. I, and I didn't realize that we had all these other policies. I didn't see them on the website. And that was one thing that Dr. Mendebro and Ms. Allen and I talked about, was making these policies easier to find on our website for parents, easier, you know, labeled, clearer. So they're going to revamp that. So I'm thankful that that's a step in the right direction for parents, so they can find these. And there's three policies, technically four, within the one Chino Valley. So I like that it's consolidated into one policy. It's a notification policy, and it's just simply to inform parents of changes in their students' records, whether it's official or unofficial. So I, I did hear a few speakers bring up the 14th Amendment. That is the supreme law of the land, and it provides a robust foundation for supporting the rights of parents to be notified of changes on their child's record. And I heard people talk about the due process and equal protection, and there are, I feel like I'm, I could be really close to passing the bar exam. I'm just kidding, but I feel like I've studied that much on these court cases and the Constitution and the amendments, and it's, there's a lot, there's a lot to study. But there is a case law, Troxel v. Granville. The court emphasized that interest of parents in the care and custody and control of their children is perhaps the oldest of the fundamental liberty interests recognized by this court. And if parents have a fundamental right to direct the upbringing and education of their children, they should be informed of changes in their child's records, as this is essential for making informed decisions that affect their child's well-being. It affects their well-being. They need to know what's going on with their child, especially when they're away from their, their presence, the parents. The procedural aspect of the due process clause ensures that parents are given notice and opportunity to be heard regarding decisions affecting their children. And there's another case law, Cleveland Board of Education v. LaFleur from 1974. The court highlighted the importance of a procedural due process in ensuring fair treatment by the government. When a school makes changes to a student's records, notifying the parents ensures that they have the opportunity to be involved in the decisions that directly impact their child's education and welfare. This procedural safeguard is necessary to protect the parents' fundamental rights. And the 14th Amendment requires that individuals in similar situations be treated equally under the law. That's the equal protection clause. Piler v. Doe from 1982. The Supreme Court held that states cannot deny students a free public education based on their immigration status, underscoring the principle that educational rights must be administered equally. Schools must provide equal access to information for all parents regarding their children's educational records. Ensuring that all parents are notified of changes in their child's records supports equal treatment and prevents discriminatory practices. So from my research that I did, I, I just found case after case to support notifying parents and keeping them involved. This policy does not single out LGBTQ. It does not single out gender. This is revised. The original, the original did say gender, just to be clear. The one that I originally brought back in January, I think it was, did state if a child wants to change their gender or their name. This new revised policy took away that because the judge said that's discriminatory, and I, I see that as singling out those students. This policy is more generic. It says any change, so it could be seating chart change, it could be they're trying out for the cheerleading team, or they're wanting to try out for softball. So there's, there's other examples. This is any change to a, a document that's related to their child. I really believe that the parent should know all information. So that's basically, I have, I have other things to say if it comes up, but that's the basics of it. I would like to know what each trustee feels about this, what their thoughts are about it, and hear feedback from this. Thank you.
I am so glad that we have had so many people from our community here today voicing their concerns about the rights of students and the rights of parents. I'm also very happy to understand that any notification that is being requested in the revised Chino Hills policy is already being handled in current policies, and that parents are being notified regarding any changes in any official records. I don't know that they're being notified if a student wants to change seats because the sun's in their eyes today, but I do know that they are being notified of important things that may have far-reaching consequences in their lives, and that is really the important thing. We already have policies in place. I don't see a reason to put together another policy and rewrite things that we already have. I think that, that we're good with the policies that we currently have.
First and foremost, I will echo the same remarks in regards to Dr. Mendebro going through and pulling the pieces of the policies that we hold that really cover a lot of the Chino Hills policy. I do want to ask just a clarifying question, if I may. I'm not sure how timely we might be able to, but it's my understanding that this topic of discussion has come to the board's attention multiple times. I know we tabled it, but when did this, this actually started in the summer of last 2023? Okay. And so I, I just need some clarification. It was an action item at one point, or has it ever been made an action item? I know we tabled it.
It was brought initially as discussion like this one, and then it was brought back as an action item for a first read, and in the middle, in between that time, Chino Valley was sued by Attorney General Bonta. And so upon Joe Marcano's recommendation, we tabled it. And so now I want to give just a quick update on that. It is still in litigation. However, the judge, they brought forward the revised version of this policy where it includes all students and any records, and the judge approved that portion of the policy. So they're still in litigation over the original policy, but they've since revised it and have implemented it in Chino Valley and Temecula and Orange County. And I think there's one more that I can't think of right now, but there's about four school districts in California.
So I, I've spent some time with this. I've, I've looked in it. I, I think that I've really examined a lot of, you know, the cases that you speak of and the things that are out there. But I continue as a board member and as a trustee, I continue to go back to my representation of the Kern County Board of Education, and it is that last piece in that title that I feel just, just has to really shed some light on what our role is. And so I would ask, you know, several questions, honestly. Does this poly, policy actually ensure academic success in our students? Academic success, education, is this a policy that puts our children first as our mission states? Does the policy provide oversight to educational programs, which is part of our role? Are we overseeing the educational piece of a program? Are we supporting through this policy the success of their public education? I, I just think that those are questions that just continue to come up. I was an educator in the high school setting for 20 years. I'm now in the college role. My job when students enter that door is to educate. It is to foster skill sets. It is to give them the opportunity to grow. It is not to police. It is not to control and report, and, you know, we do a lot of that already, and I just, I have to go back to the role of education. We should be focusing on policies that support curriculum. We should be focusing in this meeting on policies that support the programs that we have. I heard tonight, Camp Keep. We should be talking about what we are doing in education to support the role of students and their teachers that also supports their parents, because it does. The education that we give in a classroom supports parents. We are educating, and I, and I also want to speak to a couple of other factors. I, I think first and foremost, and I'm going to be really blunt here, I really heavily think that this policy is very much a political issue, and there is a role here that we are supposed to take a stance and that we are supposed to somehow as board members be marked by what we believe with this policy. And I'm not going to do that. I'm not going to do it. I will tell you 100% I am supportive of parents. You can ask the thousands of parents that I speak to on a regular basis, and I can guarantee you that I am support of students. But I am first and foremost, my job is to educate them, not police. So I really think that there is a political agenda with a lot of these policies that we've covered in my time being here. There is not a focus on direct education, and that's what I want to see. Bring those things forward. Let us see those. We are asking tonight to look at a policy that has not even been made law. It hasn't been covered by anyone, and we are roguely asked to adopt something and cause massive amounts of chaos, confusion? I mean, let's talk about some confusion. Put this policy into play, and every teacher tonight will be wondering what happens tomorrow. And every kid will be wondering the same thing, and every parent. You know, it's already what I have found being on this board and the county sector is that a majority of the public believes that what we do here dictates what a local district has to do, and that is not true. While it is nice that they would oblige to things that we've done, respect things that we've done, and look at them, they certainly have the right to not adopt any policy that we put into play. And so there's already confusion that, hey, if the county's doing it, gosh darn it, every kid in Kern County is going to have to follow this. And that's not the truth. Dr. Mendebro said it himself. It is our court and community students. Here's what I want to focus on. I want to improve our ELL, our ELA, our literacy. Where are those policies? I want to improve math scores. I want to know what that graduation rate looks like. I had never been more proud than to watch those students graduate at Valley Oaks. What a remarkable thing. The, the life that they have endured and to get to that spot, that is my job as an educator and as a trustee. That's my role, is to enhance the educational program. Okay? The educational program. I know I'm going on, but I think there has been a lot of time spent on this. In my view, it, it needs to be dealt with, and it needs to be moved off, or it needs to become an action item, and it needs to be voted on, and, and we need to swiftly move past, because there are other things in education that need to be dealt with. I'm going to say one more thing because I do think, I want to, I want to just revisit the, the parent perspective, because I speak a lot about an educator. I deeply understand your desire to know what your children are saying and what they are doing in schools. Trust me, I would love to be a fly on the wall. I would love to know what my stepchild says, does, doesn't say, like a kindergarten that will tell anything about their parents to anyone who will listen. I would love to be that person and be able to see that, but I'm not. I can't go to school, although I can request, I've stated that before, I can request with my local school district to go sit in her classroom. I can stay for a week, as long as I give enough notice. Okay? I can go and I can watch everything that's happening. Okay? I have the right as a parent to request all of my child's records, written, scribbled on, mediated, recorded. I have that right. I can request anything official and unofficial. But I really truly believe that my child currently feels safe, respected, and loved by her parents. And because of that, I feel pretty confident that my child would want to identify with me, or that I would have the knowledge of identification before it was really happening at school. And, and some of you might say, you wouldn't. It's happening. I would just hope that I was involved enough to already know that. Again, you know, I, I Again, you know, I think that says a lot about where I stand. I really hope that, you know, we can look as a board to truly what our role is, and that is empower students with the ability to learn. Education. Thank you.
First, I want to clarify, students that are in our court and community schools, I know Dr. Mendebro talked about that, but I wanted to bring it to attention a little bit more. I worked at CPS, so the laws on detaining children are the same as for when they're detained by law enforcement. And the rights of the parents are still rights until that child is made a ward of the court. So you can have a child in protective custody or with law enforcement, and the parents still have the legal and some physical rights to that child in regards to their health, mental health, and sometimes the school and the location where they're at, except for when they're detained by law enforcement. So I wanted to make sure that you understood that. I would love to just focus on the academic success of our students. I would. That's one reason I was involved, became involved in education back in the day. I've been here 30 something years now, and I saw back then that our students were not being educated as they should, and the education was kind of dropping. It's my heart's desire to see the education improve and to focus on the standards that we used to focus on and not have all these extraneous topics that we have to cover. But unfortunately, and some fortunately, we are covering them. And I thank you all for coming and thinking and speaking your mind. I listen to each and one of you, and you all have valid points. I'm not saying that you don't. But the law is clearly on the parental side of protecting the student. And if we address that as a board, which I think we should, we will have a clear understanding of where we stand. There are several laws that are being taken, that parental rights are being taken away. One is AB 1955, and I will address that later in the comments. And if we don't take a stand, we're still going to be addressing the issue. It's not going to go away. It's not. So in regards to Lori Cisneros' proposal, I say that we should take a look at it because if we don't, we're not supporting the laws for parental notification like the FERPA law and the U.S. Constitution. So we could be sued either way, like one of the speakers said. I'm not afraid of litigation either way. You bring it on, our schools, our attorneys bring it on, because litigation sometimes has to happen to fix the problems. There is such a thing as civil disobedience, and that's only times, sometimes that we can change laws that are unjust. And I believe that some of the laws that are coming into play are unjust. And when, if I'm going to be talking about the unjust law for AB 1955. California Policy Center put a big letter out, which Abby read some of it, and it has a lot of great points in why we need to take a look at this law and why we need to address it as school trustees. I do think that parents need to be told. It does foster trust, and I'm sorry that teachers have to be put in this position. I don't like it. I don't think that they should. It's not the jobs of the teachers to be doing this, and it truly breaks my heart. So I again think that we do need to seriously think about all these issues to bring them to the table and address them as best as we can. Thank you.
I just have a few comments. Seems like a very comprehensive policy here from Chino Valley Unified School District. Of course, we only really care about one paragraph, and that's the notification as it pertains to the changing of records, official or unofficial. If I was a member of a local school district, I would vote for this. I'm pro parental rights. But if I'm hearing you correctly, Dr. Mendebro, because of our role as the county board of education, if we were to adopt that paragraph, that policy, we wouldn't even be able to follow it or enforce it. Is that correct?
Correct, because we would have to work with the courts and then the local school districts that send their students to us. They're the jurisdiction over those records. So we would not be able to change anything without working with the local school district, and we would have to follow their policy. Regards to that. In regards to the court, we work with the court probation, whether the kids enter custody of the ward or if they have parental jurisdiction, then we work within that as well.
I just don't see, in light of that, I don't see the point in adopting a policy that we can't follow.
Well, we can modify it.
Well, that's why I asked earlier clarification on that, and it sounded to me like you said you would notify the parents and the school that they were from. So it is, it does, it does still apply. There's only a handful of students, but in my mind, it's worth it for a handful of students. Go ahead. I'm sorry, Dr. Mendebro.
No, I was just going to say in regards to records, we would not be able to change any records, period. That would have to go to the school district.
But if there is a request to change records before they change them, don't they have to notify to get permission?
Yeah, the parent contacted us and said we want our records changed, they have to go through the school district, not through us. They would have to go to the local school district to change those records. When the records come to us, they are as they come. We can't change them.
If a child requests to change the records, I know that they can't change it automatically, but I thought I understood. You say that if a child requests to change, you have to inform the parents.
It would go back to the school district.
And the school district, both, right?
I was talking in reference to the other bullets, like the suicidal bullying.
Right.
Those policies state we contact parents immediately. We would contact parents immediately. Bullet number one talks about official and unofficial records. That would have to go through the local school district or the courts.
Earlier, you said parents in that category as well.
Not in number one. Number one is strictly court and community schools. You're asking how the students come to us for community, if we have students, but items two through seven have clear policy in regards to parent involvement. But item number one, we cannot change records once they come to us without the local school district telling us to change it or the courts telling us to change it.
For clarification, say if this child does ask that, then the school district has that right to change it, and then they come back, and then our records would be changed.
Correct. So if someone comes and says, I want to change my name, then we contact the district because it's their official record, it's not ours.
So it would be the policy of the district where the student resides that would cover whether or not the parent would be notified or not. It wouldn't have to do with our policy.
Correct. So if a local school district had this, they have the Chino Valley policy, and they come to us, then we are obligated to follow their policy. So if their policy states that we have to notify parents, we would notify the parents and also the district. But either way, the district has to be notified because it's their student who they're sending to us, whereas the local school district is their student, so they work with the parents directly.
Okay. Trustee Dan, did you want to say anything?
I, in talking with Dr. Mendebro over this, I feel the same way. We've got it, we've got everything already here. Number one is the only one that really is the problem, and that's with the unofficial record. The official records, whether we have jurisdiction over those or not, we still have to notify the parents for official record changes. Unofficial record changes, the law states already that we cannot notify the parents. And if we notify the district that there's a problem this way, they still can't notify the parents because it's not, it's law at this point. It hasn't been adjudicated in Chino, as far as I know, at this point, and I don't know why we keep going over this when it's still in adjudication. We already do pretty much everything that you've asked for in this, in what Chino is doing, except for number one. And number one goes back to the district, not to us. That's my two cents word.
I just, I just love America. I'm going to say that because I just love that we can have this discussion right here in a public building, and it's rich to me. This is rich. I know we've got a lot of different opinions. I've heard them all. I've taken notes on everybody. And I encourage you to listen in. The Senate and Congress, the Educational Committee, everything at a federal level, they are actually having this exact conversation right now. So that's why this is a movement happening, right? This is, this is new. I am with you on focusing on language arts, math, and science, and social studies. I was a teacher too. I still am. I teach writing. But I believe that there's a shift happening at state level and federal level. So it's important for us to pay attention to that, to have these discussions. We all understand a little bit better about how this works for Kern County Board of Education, and I'm just thankful that we can talk about this. It's important because I know we all, everyone up here, and I believe everyone in the audience believes that parents are important in a child's life, no matter the age. And so everything that happens in their lives, especially when they're out of touch from their parents for the day, is important to know what's going on. So I appreciate the time to discuss this. I do not believe it was a waste of time. This is, this is something that we get to do as Americans. And really, seriously, tune in to these Senate meetings and Congress and Education Committee meetings. You can find them all on YouTube. They're, they're talking about this and arguing, and it is definitely a big movement right now. I don't have any reason to gain politically. I am a regular person living on a farm, teaching writing and grammar to kids online and in person privately, and my husband and I, it's just, you know, us at home. I don't have any reason to promote myself. So this is not an agenda, if you think so, but I'm just saying thank you for taking the time to discuss this. And I would like to ask, I would like to request that we move forward with a first read in August on this topic of notification.
I don't.
No.
I'm sorry. Sorry. That's not me.
I heard two noes.
No.
Three. Okay.
I'll always read something. I'm open to that.
This is, this is.
We've been there, done that.
Trustee Cisneros, I have a question.
Sure.
Have you uncovered, in your investigation of this, have you uncovered a school board, a county school board that has came across us and taken any action?
Orange County has adopted this notification policy.
Okay.
Orange County.
Maybe it could be relevant to contact Orange County at some point and find out what their reasoning was and what they, how they did that.
Okay. That's a good idea. I just wanted to make sure, because I requested to have it be brought back. I know there were three noes. I guess we're missing one, so.
Well, it's not a formal vote.
But to bring it back on the agenda, is it, is it a decision of the board or is it a decision of the president?
It's a decision of the president.
Okay.
Is that part of this discussion? Because I'm happy to bring it back as an action item, but not a first read. We'll go right to a vote.
This is not our policy, though. This is Chino Valley's, so we can't vote on Chino Valley's policies. So it would have to be written in our language.
We couldn't vote on something that's not written up.
Yeah. This is just for discussion today.
But I believe it was, the original policy was up as an action item at one point? And is that what we tabled?
Yes, we tabled that.
So essentially, by law, that tabled item needs to come back and be voted on.
Yeah, the decision by the board at the time was.
Was to table the action item.
Outcome of that particular lawsuit. This policy that trustee Cisneros brought back was a revised policy that Chino Valley had approved, and this is the one that she wanted us to focus on now instead of the other policy.
And it's tabled.
The Title IX is also being discussed on a lot of different levels in the government, just to bring to your attention in case you haven't heard about that yet. But the Biden administration has decided to change some of the wording as a definition of sex to be gender identity and sexual orientation. As of today, there are currently eight lawsuits against the United States Department of Education based on that revision of Title IX of the Constitution, of the Fourteenth Amendment of the Constitution. There are 26 states, one school district, two students, and five conservative advocacy organizations that have signed into these lawsuits. There are 14 of those 26 states where the rule is on hold. Alaska, Idaho, Indiana, Kansas, Kentucky, Louisiana, Mississippi, Montana, Ohio, Tennessee, Utah, Virginia, West Virginia, and Wyoming. So the change was any education program or activity receiving federal financial assistance. The Biden administration has changed the category under that as gender identity and sexual orientation. So the concern is girls would be forced to undress in locker rooms and share hotel rooms with boys on overnight school trips. Teachers and students will have to refrain from speaking truthfully about biological sex, and girls will lose their right to fair competitions in sports, according to legal counsel Rachel Ralou of the Alliance Defending Freedom. So I'm just informing the board and the public of what is happening on a federal level with Title IX.
Tonight, I heard someone mention that the lifestyle of some of our community members is evil. And I want to make sure that everyone understands that our youth understand that many in our community feel that way about them. And I know with the parental notification that one of the concerns is that students will be hiding things from parents. I want to share something with you regarding our youth. Our youth, especially those who come from homes where there may be abuse, constantly have a risk assessment going on in their brains, okay? And there are many times where they may experience severe abuse. They may be beaten. And yet, when they come to school, they may not share that information. And many people probably think, well, why not? If they would just, you know, if they would just share it, then they'd get out of that situation. But our youth are pretty smart, and they understand the way the world works. And the world works like this. If I, as an adult, am beaten by an individual and I ask the police to arrest them and they arrest them, that individual goes to jail and I get to go home. If a young person is beaten by an adult that cares for them, and somebody finds out about it, and that parent is arrested, that child does not get to go home. More than likely, that child becomes a ward of the state. And our youth know this. And so to protect their lives, they sometimes will share things with people at school that they won't share at home because they know at home they will get beaten. But they can't share that information at school because we have rules in place about mandatory reporting. And if a student says that I'm being beaten at home, there is a rule that says the school must notify authorities that that is happening. So therefore, we have put our youth in such a situation where they can't be themselves, and again, these are the people that some of you have called evil. So our evil youth have been put into a situation where they can't be themselves at home, and when they go to school, they now may be in fear to be able to be their true selves because if they tell anyone what really happens at home, they no longer have a home. Thank you.
In response to the California Department of Education guidance, which directs schools and teachers to light a parent's when their child changes genders, school districts have passed parental notification policies. So this is in regards to some of the things that we talked about already. But the California Attorney General's Office admitted in federal court that the state's guidance is legally unenforceable. AB 1955 is an attempt to skirt the control of school boards by codifying unconstitutional CDE policy, which would ban parental notification and keeps parents out of loop. This is what I'm fighting. This is what I'm fighting. Because they don't need to be telling us that that's going to be a ban. So as much as you think that we're trying to fight or subvert this, we're not. We're trying to fight the legislature who is telling us what to do and to make laws that are unethical. Because there are times when even if this wasn't in law, that parents really do need to be informed, and the teachers can help. So we're fighting for our freedoms. The bottom line is the public schools are meant to support parents in their efforts to educate their children, not subvert parents as AB 1955 would do. It's a red herring bill, and supporters of this bill frame it as an anti outing things and all those things that you think, and it's not. It's not any of those things. I don't, and if you would like to talk to me about it, I would love to talk to you about it. There is not a single school district policy in California that requires teachers or administrators to tell single parent, a single parent if their child exhibits any signs or behaviors of the same-sex attraction, dresses as another gender, or tells a teacher or administrator that they are the same-sex attracted. Every parental notification policy that has been adopted and affirmed by the Superior Courts in Riverside and San Bernardino counties only require parental notification if a child firmly asks a teacher or administrator to change their name or pronouns in class or at school, and that's it. It's not anything else.
I'm sorry, Mary. Are you advocating that we should tell parents if a child seems to be attracted to the same sex? Is that what you're advocating?
No, I'm not. I didn't say.
No, but is that what you, you just said that there is no rule that requires parental notification of that? That's what you just said. There's no rule that requires parental notification in the event a child exhibits same-sex attraction.
Okay, and I'm not saying that I had to make a rule for that. I'm not, I don't know why you're getting upset.
Then why did you bring it up? Why did you bring up the fact that there is no rule if you're not interested in making a rule for it to be?
It's just part of the whole issue.
It sure seems to me that you're bringing it up as if it is something that you are interested in.
Okay, it's not.
That's right. It is Mary's turn to speak.
I'm sorry, but it's, I don't think that at all. This bill, the AB 1955, would also violate the FERPA Act, and that's a clear right on the parents to have a universal access to information about their child at a public school. And it also assumes that parents are dangerous and not to be trusted, which many parents are to be trusted and do have the best interest of the children at heart. The Attorney General and the State Superintendent of Public Instruction continue to ask local schools, districts for their adoption of policy affirmed by judges across the state. And I think it's in retaliation for the parental notifications that have been adopted by some of the schools. So again, I bring all this up because it's an issue that we're going to be facing. It is an issue in regards to taking away our parental rights and the state telling us what we have to do. And that is what I'm fighting. Thank you.
You know, we've talked about this in both issues that, the new one is going to be the Title IX stuff, and they're both political. Look at them, the way they've been brought up. They've been brought up by our legislature in California. If you don't like it, unfortunately, we're not a majority in this state. We're a minority. LA, San Francisco, Trumpus. Probably a bad term. But that's where we are. If you want to change any of this stuff, vote appropriately. Get rid of these jerks up in Sacramento. And that's all I have to say. I can't wait to see what we're going to be, I can't wait to find out what this meeting is going to be like tomorrow when we start reading about or hear about whether we're pedophiles again or whatever it is that we were called. What were we called last time? Pedophiles? Yeah.
Yeah. Rumors, pedophiles.
I hope there's a little bit of clarity in what came out of this meeting tonight for you people.